And called this meeting, uh, this regular meeting of the Lansing School District Board of Education to order. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance and to the Republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible,
justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Beverly?
Present.
Dr. Body?
Here.
Dr. Burrows?
Here.
Ms. Hodgens?
Here.
Mrs. Lawrence?
Here.
Mrs. Lilchi?
Here.
Mr. Lopez?
Present.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mrs. Willis?
Present.
Ormus, uh, present.
Thank you very much. I know that some of my friends who are in choirs have had rehearsals via Zoom and just based on our Pledge of Allegiance, I wonder how in the world they're doing that, but anyway. Any additions to the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none. Uh, Lynette, please correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe we have any public comment submissions.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we will move right along to our report from Superintendent Mr. Synacropie.
Thank you, President Lawrence. We're gonna do things a little bit different tonight. Let's see if we can shake things up. I'm gonna have the Did You Knows first and then we'll get to my report. Uh, let's see, Mr. Keck, I think, is up.
Good evening. Did you know the future for frontliners is a full tuition scholarship available for workers to be able to attend community college? One hundred adults identified in the greater Lansing area who qualify for this opportunity and are in need of GED credentials. We have contacted and enrolled twelve individuals in the Lansing School District Adult Education Program to fulfill their pathway to post-secondary education. Thank you.
Great, great.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lang?
Good evening. Did you know the Lansing District Food Service Meal Distribution Program passed a major milestone? In the last couple of weeks, the district has now distributed over one million meals to children in our community since the program began on March sixteenth. If we include the adult meals, the district was allowed to serve until June thirtieth, we have provided one thou- or excuse me, one million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty meals. Thank you.
Wow. Uh, Ms. Ms. Black?
Thank you. Good evening. Did you know that yesterday we had a full day of district-wide professional development? One of our fourth, uh, breakout sessions was titled Attendance, The First Step to Engagement. This session was focused on attendance trends and the connection between attendance, engagement, and achievement. There were a hundred and seventy-one energetic and engaged participants. We are spreading the word and problem-solving around next steps to increase student attendance. Thank you.
Ms. Benavides?
Good evening. Did you know during our district-wide professional development yesterday, two hundred and sixty-five teachers, special education staff, and support staff attended a session on using Google Forms? Staff learned how to create Google Forms, self-grading quizzes, graphical questions for younger students, and how to implement these forms within Google Classroom. A great discussion was held and all with all staff and the session actually ran almost an hour over as staff wanted to continue learning. We will be offering follow-up sessions as part of our We Learn Wednesday offerings on A Days, and we'll also be providing instructional technology office hours starting next week for our teachers and support staff to receive one-on-one support. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Diaz?
Good evening, everyone. Did you know that here in the Lansing School District, we have at least one instructional coach at every school? Instructional coaches partner with teachers to analyze current situations, set goals, identify and explain teaching strategies to address the goals, and ultimately provide support until the goals are met. In addition, instructional coaches are thought partners and provide a variety of supports for teachers in their schools. Some of these supports include planning, student engagement, student voice, modeling, co-teaching, data analysis, instructional technology, a listening ear, teaching strategies, and the list goes on. The Lansing School District's instructional coaches have provided support to over four hundred and fifty teachers and have supported teachers in over three thousand, four hundred and thirty-five interactions between September and October of this year. Instructional coaches have also been invited into virtual classrooms to provide teachers with supportive snapshots. These snapshots capture all of the great things our teachers are doing when working with students. Teachers have been appreciative of these supportive snapshots, especially as they learn to navigate the remote learning environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Chapman?
Evening and thank you Superintendent Synacropie. Know that the Lansing School District, district-provided professional development the last three months or three sessions has focused on equity and education. We start each of our sessions with a keynote address. We have been fortunate in the Lansing School District to date to have three, not national, but international guest speakers who focus fluently on equity and education. We are proud that we have a Board of Education that is also intentional in ensuring that e- equity and education is at the forefront of the mission of the Lansing School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman, and thank you, executive team. Uh, tonight, you're you're not gonna hear the usual superintendent's report where I kinda talk a little bit and uh, everything was filled in pretty good, really good today by ET, so I'm gonna talk to you just a little bit about what we're gonna start tonight, which will be a, uh, regular monthly feature of our board meetings, and it'll be held on the third board meeting of each month, but we'll have our, uh, Lansing School District nursing staff uh, do a short presentation and be able to answer any questions that you might have about, uh, what's going on i- in the school district from from their, uh, from their view. They are, they are trust entrusted with, uh, providing health and safety for our students and staff, and we appreciate all that they do. I'm now gonna introduce Cordelia Black, who will introduce them, but, uh, whoever, if it's you, Cordelia, or Sue, would we make sure that we uh, acknowledge all of the school nursing staff that are here tonight by by name so they can take a virtual bow?
Thank you, Superintendent. I am very pleased to introduce the Lansing School District's, uh, nursing team. These ladies work hard every day, uh, for the benefit of our, uh, students, our families, and our community. I'm now gonna turn this over to Ms. Sue Wheeler, who introduced all of the nurses individually. Thank you.
Thank you, Cordelia, and thank you Superintendent Synacropie. I am speaking tonight on behalf of the nurse team, who I'm going to, uh, introduce to you now, and perhaps they can do a little virtual bow with all these little screens so we can recognize, uh, who they are. Uh, first, we have Mary Beth Braddock. Oh, she's waving to us now. I, uh, Jess Comer, um, I don't see her on the screen.
I'm here.
Oh, there she is. Great, great. Um, Carlyn Cox. And there she is, we found Karen. Darnell. Jen David. Amanda Cletus. Becky Hoss. Uh, Kate McCarthy. Tammy Treat. Oh, she's front and center. Randy Trumble.
Good evening, everybody.
And now I'm going to attempt a technological feat for me, which is to share a screen. Up, uh, my message that says host disabled screen share.
Just a second. Uh, let's see. Okay, you should be able to.
Yes, I can.
Oh, while you're doing that, just before, let's give all those, just give all our school nurses a nice hand for helping us and being here tonight. Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, Sue, go ahead.
No problem. That, uh, was maybe a virtual hand. I don't know. Well, as we begin, I would just say the school nurses provide a wide range of services from direct skilled nursing care to case management for children with special health needs or life-threatening medical conditions, to training of staff and supportive staff across the district, and then many, many health promotional programs and services. Tonight, we wanna turn our attention to the COVID nineteen crisis in our community and provide you with a brief summary. This is data from the Ingham County Health Department, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and the CDC. The data leave no doubt that we have entered the second wave of COVID nineteen and are in the worst public health crisis in a hundred years. The significance of the data we're going to share tonight and our response to that data cannot be overstated. As you can see here, the total number of COVID cases in Ingham County as of this report, which is now about five days old, was five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine cases and nearly two hundred and fifty thousand cases in Michigan. On Sunday, many of you probably saw the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services announcing emergency orders in response to the sharp rise in every COVID indicator. First, the incidence of COVID nineteen continues to grow across the area. Although the data you're going to see tonight is a few days old, every single indicator has risen sharply. Overall, in Michigan, you'll see here the number of cases per one hundred thousand residents only five days ago was averaging about forty-five hundred new cases per day. In the last two days, we've been over six thousand cases per day. The bottom portion of this, uh, page will show you the percent of positive cases. This is a significant indicator for the presence of disease in the community. In Ingham County, you'll see we're at about seven percent of positive cases for those who are tested. The incidence curve graph here depicts the sharp rise in positive COVID cases in Ingham County, which of course is the primary county of residence for our students. March, there were less than ten cases per day, and now, six months later, and despite public health policy and recommendations, we're seeing more than a hundred and fifty new cases per day in Ingham County alone. Ingham County data that's isolated by ra- race and ethnicity, as well as age, are consistent with state and national trends. Minority groups and people of color are disproportionately impacted by COVID nineteen, both in our community and across the nation. The smaller pie chart on the right represents the number of children in all three counties who have tested positive for COVID. Although we once believed that children were not likely to be affected by COVID nineteen, as time goes on, we're seeing more and more pediatric cases. In Ingham County alone, there have been over eleven hundred confirmed positive pediatric cases. Our knowledge base has grown. It's grown tremendously over the past nine months, and we are recognizing the unique characteristics, transmission, treatment, and unfortunately residual effects of COVID nineteen among children. As the overall cases of COVID continue to rise, we're also seeing a corresponding rise in hospitalizations in our region. These numbers are also changing rapidly. They are rising rapidly, and our local hospital resources are being challenged beyond belief. The Lansing School District has been steadfast in our primary goal of keeping our students and staff safe and healthy during this unprecedented time. Our commitment to follow the best practice guidelines identified by CDC and the MDHHS have shaped our decision-making surrounding remote learning, student engagement, and support services that have been put in place to help our students and families who are navigating this challenging time. The Multidisciplinary Beyond Screen-to-Screen Learning Group continues to rely heavily on local, state, and national data trends in the development of a science-based educational model with health and safety at the forefront. As we move into the Thanksgiving holiday next week, the school nurses would like to offer the following tips. First, as both the governor and the health department advised, please celebrate with only the people who live in your home. This means no extended family, friends, or neighbors. This recommendation was developed because we've learned over the past eight months that the transmission risk is far greater indoors while eating and drinking. The small home gatherings have emerged as a leading spreading event. We do recognize the burden in isolating during this traditional family holiday time, and we are also acutely aware of this rapidly expanding public health crisis, which can only be mitigated with full cooperation and participation of all. In conjunction with the COVID updates, we also want to remind the Ellis, the Lansing School District community that now is the time to get a flu vaccine. The benefits of the flu vaccine shown here are reducing the severity of the flu if you do get it, reduce the risk of needing medical care by more than forty percent, reduce the risk of hospitalization from the flu, which leaves more open space for COVID patients. It also helps protect people around you from getting the flu and reduces the risk of flu-associated death in children by nearly seventy percent. This year, it is especially important to get the flu vaccine, not only to reduce your risk of getting the flu yourself, but you're also trying to avoid COVID. Reducing the number of flu cases will decrease the strain on our hospitals, clinics, healthcare providers, so that they may continue to manage the COVID nineteen cases. We thank you for the opportunity to provide this data tonight, and the entire school nurse team extends best wishes for a happy, healthy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Sue. I tha- I appreciate that. And, uh, President Lawrence, I don't know if if the board has any questions, so before we, uh, wrap up our report.
I don't have any questions, but I would like to first, may I, uh, be recognized, Madam Chair?
Please go ahead.
I would first like to thank our nurses for all their hard work and leadership on this. Um, and then I would like to underscore the importance as a physician and maybe reiterate some of the things that were just said. In fact, yeah, in the, in the few days that since this report was put together, the, uh, test positivity rate in Ingle County has, uh, has exceeded ten percent, and in Eaton County, it's actually thirteen point five percent. Uh, so even in the past week, uh, more people are testing positive. And, uh, there, it it appears that that trend is only going to continue. Uh, and so it's really, really important, uh, during this time that families generally get together, uh, that people really strongly consider not doing that. Um, and I think the best way that I heard it put recently was, uh, you know, to make a sacrifice for this year so that you 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 and your family members can be alive uh, in future holiday seasons to spend time, uh, with each other. Uh, the next thing that I really wanna underscore underscore is the flu vaccine. Because one of the most common things I'm hearing in my clinic this year and every year is that people are afraid to get the flu shot because they don't wanna get the flu. And so any platform that I can use to broadcast the, uh, the the fact that it is scientifically impossible to get the flu from the flu shot, I will take it and use it, including today. So anybody that's watching at home or anybody who's listening, please, if you don't already know, it is scientifically impossible to get the flu from the flu shot. What's in the flu shot is something that resembles the actual virus so that your body can recognize and fight off the real virus if you're exposed. So it's not a live vaccine, it's a deactivated vaccine, so you won't get sick if you get the flu shot. But what you will do is lower your chances of needing to be hospitalized, uh, for the flu, and that'll save beds for people who really need them, because, uh, as of this week, Sparrow Hospital's, uh, capacity for COVID patients was more than eighty percent, and it's just a matter of time before all those beds potentially get used up, so we really want to save every bed that we can possibly save, uh, for the people who really need them, and so uh, having the community really do a strong job in getting their flu shot this year is really, really important so that we can have less hospitalizations for influenza. So, uh, uh, if you haven't gotten your flu shot yet, please, please do. Um, and with that, I'll turn it back to the chair, and I wanna thank, uh, the nursing staff again for their leadership.
Thank you very much, Dr. Body. Thank, thank you for that really valuable information. Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, again, thank you so much to the nursing staff. Thanks for being with us this evening. Um, and everybody, please, please get your flu shot.
And
Thank you.
That, uh, I I have to say one thing, and this has nothing to do with anything. Well, I may say this. First of all, I wanna give my thanks to the nursing staff also, and we we're we're gonna keep you busy, uh, Sue, I promise. I promised that about, uh, several weeks ago, and, uh, well, uh, the nursing staff will be back at the third meeting in December. Um, maybe not all of them, but, uh, to give a, we'll we'll give a report each month to let you know how things are going. The only other thing I wanna mention, and I'm not trying to curry favor with any particular board members, but, uh, as most of you know, uh, we have a, an interest, a family interest in, uh, some restaurants around town, and one of the restaurants today had their sandwich special, which was called a Rachel. So I, you know, I don't know how that happened. I I honestly had nothing to do with it, but, uh, uh, my wife and I had, uh, both each had a Rachel tonight. It isn't bad. It isn't, it's pretty good. So, uh,
It isn't bad? Is that a great endorsement for your son?
How much? How much? It was, it was a spe- a special today, eight dollars, so.
I'm on discount, Nina.
It was great. It was, it was great. So, leave it at that. I think that's probably enough. Uh, that concludes our report tonight. President Lawrence?
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Uh, okay, so we're gonna move on to routine matters and old business for this evening. Our committee reports, facilities committee, Dr. Brian Bigred Beckley.
Hey, go Big Reds. Uh, facilities committee, uh, met this morning. Um, it was really great conversation around a number of agenda items. Uh, first, we heard, uh, updated capital improvement campaign, uh, presentation from, uh, Ben Botwinski uh, regarding the Eversaw Center, talked about moving, uh, a couple of projects from phase one uh, to phase two, and then a couple of projects from phase two to phase one, um, from uh, the earlier presentation that the board heard, including moving the amphitheater and the pavilion to phase one, um, to get started on that work. Um, and then moves moving, uh, the Yert Village, uh, that's gonna occur, um, is planned for a more remote, uh, aspect of of Eversaw Center, I mean, moving that to phase three. We also talked about the need to consider, um, seriously consider some of the updates, uh, that are included in phase three, including uh, windows and updates to flooring in the dormitories. Uh, we just had a discussion about considering, uh, a variety of financial support, including, um, funds, uh, from Fund Forty-Five, as well as pursuing some grant applications. And then they're engaging, uh, a survey, uh, to give a clear picture around the budget for the amphitheater and pavilion projects. Uh, from there, we, uh, took a look at, uh, some bid recommendations for roof reinforcement at North Elementary. Uh, move those to consent agenda for our upcoming meeting. Further, we, uh, received some recommendations, uh, for some bids for upgrades at Sexton, upgrades including of the office and the entry, the cafeteria, and a connector, uh, from the main building to the annex. We moved those, uh, to the consent agenda for next meeting as well. Then we had a discussion regarding, uh, some naming requests, uh, for some of our, uh, facilities around the district. Uh, we received some requests from community members to consider some naming requests. Uh, we, uh, decided to, uh, follow the process, allow executive team to review those, uh, requests, and provide a recommendation back to facilities committee, uh, before coming back to the full board. Uh, additionally, we heard, uh, from, uh, Barry Roney, our owner's rep, who gave us an update about, uh, an issue, um, in the construction area at Everett regarding, um, some asbestos exposure. The area has been confined, um, their cleanup, uh, process is underway, is going to, uh, include a probably a six-week delay, um, in the project overall, um, as well as, um, considering, uh, some potential, um, litigation, uh, moving forward. Uh, in terms of old business, uh, we discussed the Eastern Fields Drainage, um, and are maybe considering some alternate routes. Um, Sam will shoot you an update, uh, probably after this meeting, of a conversation I had, uh, yet earlier to happen between the facilities committee and this meeting. Um, and then, uh, we are requesting additional financial information from the potential buyer or, let's see, for auto. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Dr. Beverly? It was a long one this morning. Okay, moving on to Promise Committee, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we had a meeting this afternoon, just, uh, a few minutes, uh, from our meeting, so.
Busy day.
Hot off the press. Yes, it was a heavy day. Well, let me start with the, um, financials, uh, that we heard today. Uh, number one, the audit report came squeaky clean. Uh, the promise was, uh, was found to be in in very good shape in terms of the audit, so we don't have anything to, uh, to, uh, be, uh, concerned of, uh, and about in terms of that. We, um, we reviewed the nine ninety, which is, uh, document, uh, prepared for for Promise by, um, an accountant, and ended, uh, nine ninety, which is really a kind of pro forma report to the, to this, to the feds, but in it, uh, it tells us that we have raised and the community has helped the promise to the tune of three and a quarter million dollars in the last five years. Okay, which is, was nice to hear. And, um, these are, these are just, uh, monies raised, the non-governmental monies. And we also, um, in our Promise financials, uh, we are in the black in the first four months of, uh, of the fiscal year. And, um, we heard, again, you know, uh, more officially, uh, we haven't received a check yet, but the tax capture again for this, for this coming year is six hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars plus cents. So, and that is strictly for scholarships and and for student, uh, learning, education. So that's a great thing for for the promise. In terms of, um, other information, uh, three hundred and sixty seniors are, uh, have, uh, have been, um, have applied for twenty twenty from last, uh, from our twenty twenty seniors, three hundred and sixty, uh, have applied, uh, for the promise. This year, we have four hundred and ninety-six seniors in the district. Of those, a hundred and forty are are promised. Of those, a hundred and forty are are promise scholars that have, you know, uh the Hope Scholar uh Scholarship is uh is still there, so a hundred and forty of the students are Hope Scholars. And of the four ninety-six, four hundred and two uh seniors are eligible for the promise. So that this means that the uh ninety-four seniors are either from out of the district, don't live in the district, or did not have uh the required number of years uh or high school, the four years of high school in our district. So that that's pretty good. Um uh another project that was um um that was talked about previously is Lansing Reeds. And um this is a project that uh wanted to raise fifty thousand dollars for RIF, Lansing Reeds. Uh to date, they've raised forty thousand. So we're still a little bit short, uh ten thousand dollars. So if anybody wishes to to help, uh you're welcome to do so, okay? The the second part of that uh Lansing Reeds project was that uh they wanted to record, have people record uh reading of books, you know, for children. They want to record two hundred books. And this then will be lent to the teachers or will be in the libraries teachers can use. To date, they have a hundred uh already recorded. So if any one of you wants to read and record your reading of a book, uh please uh raise your hand or give me your name, text me your name or whatever, and we can pass it on. Um, the there was a goal also to um to get a library card for every student in the school district. But with COVID and all those things that are happening, that's kind of a, you know, got some ups and downs, so that's still in progress. Um The other thing is that Michigan State University, either court uh conducted or is conducting a survey um of students, and this survey shows to date that uh Lansing Promise students have a higher persistent rate than most. So uh more information coming, but that that's good news in terms of the uh of the promise and the support uh we're giving our students uh while they're in college. And finally, um, a project that's um that's going to happen is the Promise um documentary and world premiere, okay? So the intent is to do a documentary of the promise from its inception and all that's happening throughout and 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 to the present. So uh if you wish to um you know, uh bring bring in the information you have in terms of the promise, what you've seen, so on and so forth, please uh uh make sure that that you can uh call Jay uh Justin and um share anything you may you may have uh regarding uh this documentary, and that would be a good thing for to include. And uh and then finally, finally, um the annual review of the executive director will happen in December. And um the executive committee of of both the foundation and promise authority board will be doing that. Um, uh Dr. Rodriguez, if you have anything else to in to include in this report, uh please, please go ahead, sir, if you have uh additional information that I didn't capture.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. I think you did really a very good report. The only thing I think we got to congratulate Mrs. Bernero for the dinner that she did with the seniors and and in the last week or something like that. And they also, the uh Michigan State Credit Union supporting uh the students, they add the positive money and they they also donate some money for them, and they are going to have a virtual workshop the November twenty-four. But um you did a very, very, very good report today to the board. Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Yes, I'll also mention that last week they had a spaghetti dinner. And then after the dinner, they had a Zoom meeting with students and parents. And all that was put together by Terry Bernero, and uh she gets a really high marks for the work she's doing, and the district through her gets the marks because we're cooperating very well with the promise, and obviously we want to do that because it's our students and we want them to succeed. The other thing that we should be proud of is that other promise zones, uh in particular, the uh Kalamazoo Promise Group um is looking at Lansing uh Promise to take some tips as to how to do the work of the promise. So um people are coming to Lansing to learn uh how to run a a promise authority uh zone and um the workings of such. Madam Chair, that's my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Lopez? Okay, thank you, Mr. Lopez. Moving on to equity committee, Mrs. Willis.
Thank you, Madam President. The equity committee met on Monday, and we um took a deep dive of a review of the equity firms that submitted their RFPs, and we narrowed down our choice, our finalists from eleven um firms down to four. And so we have reached out to those four firms and asked for additional information and references and completed bodies of works. We can take a look at what some of the products we may potentially receive may look like. Um and then we'll go there. I will tell you that it was it was quite funny, the group. Um, we had like this whole algorithm and process and and uh tracking. And then when we just finally said, what are your bottom two? What are your top two? Every like the it matched right up with what the number says. We're like, oh, great, the system works. So just even by voice vote, when we added some criteria to assessing the RFPs, we were able to narrow it down uh with pretty good consensus. Uh we will be meeting again a second week of this summer, hopefully to review the additional information from um the firms. And that concludes. Oh, and then just a note, um we did, we talked about this, you know, we were we are we're very anxious to want to see a product and start doing the work that will come with um this equity report, but um we sort of talked about, you know, these issues weren't born overnight, so they're not going to be fixed overnight. And so we would much rather be very intentional with um our action rather than rush it. So I know that folks are anxious to get this process started, but we really do have a very dedicated group of folks on that team that are working to be very intentional. So I just want to just point that out. Um, and then I also am just going to say this, I um you have my complete forgiveness, Madam Chair, for recognizing Dr. Beverly with the handle of Big Red Beverly for the simple fact that he is winding down on his dates of um of meetings left. But um so I I I will respect the game for just these these few final meetings.
So what you're saying is that our next meeting, you want me to have my varsity jacket on and ha- there we go. There we go.
I was actually hoping for a live band performance, but
We're going to really step up our our school, high school pride for the next couple of things. Don't worry. Don't worry. Thank you very much, Mrs. Willis. Thank you again to your committee for the work that they're doing. We're really excited to see uh your your work product. Any questions for Mrs. Willis? Okay.
No question, just a comment. Um just wanted to, uh I kind of echo uh Rachel's comments and also applaud her leadership as well as uh Dr. Burrows um diligent work on on the process, um those who are participating. I know that Dr. Chapman will agree is um it's been a a straightforward and a a great conversations have come out of the work thus far, and we're excited to continue the work moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Beverly. Okay, we're going to move on to our consent agenda for this evening. Our consent agenda includes the approval of the November fifth regular meeting minutes and November twelfth information study session minutes as well as receipt and approval of the treasurer's report for October. May I have a motion?
Madam President.
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Beverly, supported by Dr. Body. Doc, I'll get you next time. Uh, any discussion regarding the consent agenda? I'm looking for, is Dr. There he is. Dr. Burrows, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, um I probably should give the treasurer's report. Uh, so uh as you can see, the the treasurer's report uh for October first through October thirty-first is attached to this evening's agenda. Um I won't dwell on too many of the highlights. It's fairly straightforward. Uh cash and investment balance is a little over twenty-five million. Uh receipts were about fourteen, uh disbursements about twenty-one. Um, our balance uh was about four point eight million dollars higher compared to the same time last year. Uh and we'd also like to thank a donation um from Carol Skinnings uh to the Fort program. So that was a donation to the district, and we thank her very much um for her support. Um, that concludes my treasurer's reports for this evening, um but I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, no questions for Dr. Burrows? Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Uh, Dr. Beverly?
Yes.
Dr. Body?
Yes.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodgins? Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Lilge?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Sorry. Uh, moving on to action items and new business for this evening. Our first item is the two thousand twenty-one summer tax resolution. Does anyone want to talk about this?
Madam President.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, thank you. I move that the Board of Education approved the tax. I know nobody want to pay taxes anyway, but I can. I move that the Board of Education approved the tax year two thousand twenty-one Lansing School District Summer Tax Resolution as is detailed in the attachment.
It's been moved by Dr. Rodriguez, supported by Mrs. Lilge. Any now now does anybody want to talk about this?
I would say these are the one taxes I don't mind paying.
Can I can I ask um for the sake of the audience uh to give a little bit more detail about what precisely this this motion uh relates to?
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, essentially, we have to pass this resolution every year to be able to levy summer taxes. So the basic explanation.
So this doesn't, this is not an increase in the tax levy?
It's just the allowing to levy them.
Mr. Ling, I'm going to give you a pass on not doing that exactly the way that Shirley Rogers would do it, but we'll get you, we'll get you up to speed nonetheless, but that is all part of her speech that she said, this is a reminder that we have to give this resolution to all the municipalities or or offices that levy and collect taxes, so we can actually receive our check. So you've already paid your taxes, the tax rate is already established. Once you pay your taxes, in order for the municipality to pay us, we have to pass a a resolution to collect it. It's okay. You can just watch old videos, John. It's okay. We'll get you.
Oh, I thought she meant that for Dr. Burrows, since he's
Dr. Burrows, too.
Thank you, Mrs. Willis. Okay, any further discussion? All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Beverly?
Yes.
Dr. Body?
Yes.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodgins? Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Lilge?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving right along, we have next up a resolution for district appointment. Excuse me, of a trustee and risk management coordinator to the Middle Cities Risk Management Trust. May I have a motion? Anyone? May I have a motion?
Madam President.
Mrs. Lilge.
I move that the Board of Education approved the resolution for district appointment of a trustee and risk management coordinator to the Middle Cities Risk Management Trust as presented.
Thank you very much. It's been moved by Mrs. Lilge, supported by Dr. Rodriguez. Discussion.
Madam President.
Mrs. Willis.
I don't have um I was gonna say I don't have an objection. I just want to make sure that it's clear the resolution appoints both an appointee and an alternate. Um, so the appointee is John Ling and the alternate is Kim Adams.
Are you saying that you believe that we need to amend the motion?
I that's why I was pausing. I was reading the motion. Um
Uh, in my in my professional life, based upon that that experience in my professional life, I think the the motion is okay as presented because we're not appointing the alternate to actually have any responsibilities unless they are serving as the trustee.
Sure.
If you catch my drift.
I I'm completely good with that. I don't need to overcomplicate it.
And what fun would life be if we weren't overcome? Dr. Burrows?
Uh again, could I get someone to elaborate for the sake of of the general public precisely what this is?
John, take it away.
Absolutely. So we are members of Middle City uh Risk Management Trust, and there's, I think, twenty seven districts throughout the state that are part of this.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two? Okay.
Yeah.
Every every district has to have an appointee that has, so they can vote on matters for the trust. This is replacing Teresa Zamasque, who used to be our trust representative. So we just uh haven't had the chance to bring this resolution yet, so. Um, it's uh Kim Adams was the alternate prior to also, so in a in fact, the only change is me replacing Teresa.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Can you give a two-sentence description of what the trust does?
Um, not much, because I haven't really participated. But uh but uh whatever policies and whatever they 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 uh vote on for the Middle Cities Risk. We have our like our property and casualty insurance through them, um so it's decisions on that sort of thing.
Mrs. Lawrence, I would add to the mid- for those that don't know, the Middle Cities Education Association is a group of thirty-two uh school districts that are, you know, around the state that are similar to us in location and number of students, and we've banded together to create, as as John was talking about, the trust, and we also work on instructional and and educational issues also.
Mr. Senacropi, any further questions or discussion? All right, will the clerk clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Beverly?
Yes.
Dr. Body?
Yes.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodgins? Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Lilge?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
I don't know about John. No, yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on, moving right along this evening, report from secretary and announcements. Doc, my friend.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to remind her that our curbside meal pickup schedule will continue for the duration of our screen-to-screen learning plan. See the Lansing School District website for details. Free pandemic tutoring services program for the Lansing School District students, grade four to twelve. Pandemic Tutoring Services is a volunteer organization created to supply additional one-on-one and small group services to students for free as they adapt to learning online. This organization considers Michigan State University students with a mission to support learning within the Lansing School District for the duration of the coronavirus pandemic. Free tutoring services for student grade four to twelve in the Lansing School District via video chat in math and English with other subjects possible based on request. For more information and to sign up, please For more information and to sign up, please visit www.lancinescouts.net/lasttutor. Saturday, November thirty-first, two thousand twenty, annual pathway to the holiday event. The Lansing School District, in partnership with Shadexon Magic, will provide five hundred Lansing School District families with the Thanksgiving pathways to the holiday packets that will include a turkey and other holiday dinner fixings. This year, this year's event will be Saturday, November twenty-first, two thousand twenty, at the Hill Center, fifty-eight fifteen Wise Road, Lansing, from twelve to two P M. You should have recently received more information in the mail. Wednesday through Friday, November twenty-fifth to twenty-seventh, no school, Thanksgiving break. And the Board of Education wish you all families and staff a great Thanksgiving break. Thursday, December third, two thousand twenty, regular meeting, six P M. Virtual meeting via Zoom with winner. Thank you, Madam President, and that is the end of the announcements.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the board? Thanks, everybody. Get your flu shots, have a happy Thanksgiving, and with that, at six fifty-one, we are adjourned.
Good evening. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.
Bye. Have a good evening.
Sam, I'll call you.
Happy and safe holidays.
Yes. Happy.
Good night, everyone.